Creating this garbage, how are we going to pay for all of this stuff? I mean, I think there needs to be a discussion and I'm fairly certain that Recology has other communities that are a little farther along in this process than we are. And maybe we can start talking about how are we going to pay for this in the future? Because we don't want them to go out of business because they're trucks. I mean, I agree with him completely. I went over there to try to get a couple buckets of sand the other day and I was stopped out on, you know, I couldn't even get in the door. I had to wait for half hour of all the people dumping their debris. And, you know, I'd rather see the trucks coming in, you know, down in our neighborhoods and hauling everything away than all of the pickups, you know, in line there trying to get in to dump. So, I mean, I think there's bigger question here that, you know, that we ought to, you know, be thinking about how are we going to do this? You know, what are we looking at 10 years from now and how are we going to slowly get to that point? Because I can't imagine this structure would work if we really did away with, with most of the garbage.
That's why we appreciate your comments. You know, Mark, you said something and I think Fred's had it and it didn't really dawn on me a lot until I heard about the second time was, I'm thinking about traffic going into the recycle center and if ever, I know if I had a, if I, I don't subscribe, of course I have a truck, but I don't subscribe to the lawn debris. But I could tell you what, if I had a cart, you know, a small 35 gallon or 32 gallon cart, lawn debris cart or, or green cart, I'd probably be making quite a few less trips out there than I do myself. So I think that, just that part, the transportation of the, on our streets and going in there makes, I think, and I think it also addresses, Kelly, you said, one of our goals and I think it does address one of our goals.
And in all honesty, three carts plus another thing for glass, I don't know what that will be. I'm thinking people are going to start thinking, maybe I want to try something different. Maybe I need to reduce some things here or at least think about it differently.
Well, no, just with Penny and I, we're just, we're just like Fred, our, every two weeks, our recycle, our 55 or 90 gallon recycle bin is full.
Oh, every time.
And every two weeks, our small 35 gallon, gallon garbage, it's hard to find stuff to put it, even fill it up. We could probably get by with ones a month.
I got some diapers I can dump in.
No. I want the smells, I don't want them in my backyard.
Would you take shredding too?
Well, but anyway.
Mr. Mayor. I always love to follow your lead, Mr. Mayor, but this one, I really feel like we can give the thumbs up on moving forward on option B and, um, and allowing those conversations to happen over the next, over the, over the next number of months. I, I don't, uh, I don't think it, I don't think it needs more time.
I agree with Remy and Kevin.
That's fine, I don't have, I don't have really an issue with that. Remy, so that means we do have a, and Mark, I like your comments because I think that is very good and I think for Recology's own wellness of the company, they also have to look at too, if, if we take this off where we want to take it off, what is it going to mean? I mean, that's a big issue, so thank you again, Mark, for your comments. I appreciate them, I know what you're thinking. So, we would, go ahead.
So what I, what I'd ask is, I, you, I think there's clear direction here for staff to put together a resolution to bring before the council for the, at the next meeting with the details of, of what option B is and the rate increase. I just, I haven't had an opportunity to review the franchise agreement, I want to make sure that we're doing it properly.
Well, it says, it says here on, Mark, evidently you didn't talk, Mark, because it says on the script that we can do, I mean.
Nope, she, yeah, I was not briefed on this one.
Oh, so I think we can do it, then if we can't do it, you can bring your resolution back together, because that's what surprised me too, so. Okay, um, what we can do then, is there anybody else who'd like to test, say anything even though it's not a public hearing? David, go ahead. You're just supposed to run that thing over there, but you can come over. And we're going to make you sign in and state your name, Dave.
Sorry. No problem. Would you like me to go back to my seat or you prefer I stay here to field questions?
Do whatever you'd like to do, Fred.
This will be real quick.
More questions for you though, no?
Uh, Dave Adams, KLYC radio station manager. One of the things that we've noticed is we're continuing to livestream video, in fact, people are watching us right now. We're noticing that some of the meetings are, we're noticing an overall increased number of people watching. Uh, one of the things that we're wanting to do is take this kind of to the next level in some instances where we're talking about an issue that involves the community and involves a lot of variables, smell, waste, rates, so on and so forth, to have a moderated town hall where people could interject discussion, they can see a presentation, uh, we could moderate controlled input, it wouldn't be broadcast on the radio, so we wouldn't have to worry about somebody, you know, saying something inappropriate where we'd be fined since it's on the internet, it's, you know, that's not a problem. But on issues like this where there needs to be a real, uh, good dialogue with the community to give you guys some input, uh, from a broader spectrum, uh, and also give, uh, an opportunity for education, uh, turning kind of a, this into a public town hall meeting online with moderated discussion might be something to investigate.
I like your, I like your idea, David, I think we can investigate that future. My concern, I don't know if the city attorney would do that, because if we have a town hall where we have a quorum of the councils here, then it becomes a public meeting and it has to be noticed and mod, even though it's a town hall, it's still a public meeting, it has to be noticed and to the public, it has to be, we follow all of public meeting laws and, I'm not saying that's necessarily bad.
That's not, that would in fact be good because you would promote it and more people will get involved.
Yes.
Because what you want is you want community engagement and involvement in the process.
Yeah, and I think this is one that Fred can get on if we approve this, just like we've had our own staff with Michael and, uh, Mike Bizit do with the transportation programs and the town halls we've done with the parks and everything. I think this is an ideal time to do one of those educational outreach type things and do the presentation, just like, much like what you did on the, uh, transfer station and do that same thing, so.
Yeah, I, I am really open to the council's direction on this one. Uh, this definitely doesn't happen, um, you know, abruptly and, and surprise the, by surprising our customers. That's part of the reason why we've set a timeline to October, to really, to really lay it out and get the word out, have, um, uh, mailers going out, we'll have, uh, associated with the regular billing cycles, there would be, uh, independent mailers and leaflets going out, would be a lot of planning and logistics going through this, um, a lot of communication with staff. It, this, this would be a, a big, big step forward towards, um, you know, reducing our wastes.
I have one other question for you, Fred, just, and you may not know these numbers, just for me personally. This type of a service, if, if the council moves to approve option B, uh, this, this type of a service, if I look at the rate structure, how do we, how does it compare with others in the state or in the Northwest? Is it, is it about the same? Is it less? Is it more? I mean.
Yeah, generally speaking, it's about the same. Uh, you can find higher, you can find lower. So what's difficult, oh, absolutely, I mean, that's, that's a big margin, 10% is a big margin. The, um, it, where it becomes difficult is when you're actually indeed finding an apple to an apple, because every city has a different, uh, prescription essentially of services that are available, so here, we have the drive-in drop-off option, right? That, that is a very unique, uh, service that is not offered in other communities, Newburgh for example, or Lincoln City, or, um, Dallas, but nobody has that option. Um, they have unique services that we don't and generally, as, as Mark was saying, is the anchor to the rates is generally, very, very few exceptions, is based around the garbage collection. That is, that is the one consistent denominator that historically has always been used as an anchor. You know, San Francisco, for instance, needs to explore the options that they're talking about, reaching an 82% diversion rate. Um, that's when you have to start looking at alternatives, so they're looking at charging, recycle and garbage.
Okay, I think we've had everything, Fred, except Scott.
Just a couple of questions, Fred. Um, looking at option B, curbside glass, would that be a monthly service or is that a weekly service?
Honestly, I'm going to have to get back to you.
And then yard debris, if, if we're commingling, uh, yard debris with food debris, would that be a 90 gallon weekly?
Bi-weekly.
Bi-weekly, okay, and then we would have bi-weekly of recyclables?
Correct.
And then you'd have the option of bi-weekly or weekly or monthly on garbage?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Um, well, you know, I think based on everything I've heard tonight and, and based on our goals and what we trying to do and personally some other issues that the city has dealt with and gone on, right, for, I would entertain a, uh, motion then that we would approve option B of Recology Waste Collection.
Second.
I figured you would, so moved by Councilor Drabkin, second by Councilor Makie, all those favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, let it show it pass. Um, unanimously, those members present with, uh, with Councilors Rudin, Councilors Yoder absent, and I think the next thing we'll do, since it's, it's passed, Fred, we'll probably have you start working on putting together what you feel is a good plan and make sure that, uh, between Martha and this, and the council, you keep the council informed on how you're, how you're doing on all this, so.
All right. I'm, I'm excited to start this project. I, I will say that, um, should, should anything change, if you find that there is, you know, a different sentiment than what's expressed here today, Recology Western Oregon is, is always going to work with the city and the council and staff, so, uh, if, if a pivot needs to take place of a shift, um, just call us. We'll, we'll be working forward on option B, uh, to get up and running in October. And thank you, that's, that's really exciting.
Well, it definitely meets our goals and goes along with some of our goals.
Yeah, it's going to be a huge, it's, it's a game changer.
Okay, thanks for your comments, Mark. Uh, let's go on then, continue on, uh, we do have, to continue our presentations, we have a couple more presentations and the next presentation is for the Hill Road Transportation Bond Project and Michael, I think you're going to handle that one?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll get it started and then I'll, uh, hand off, uh, the presentation to our consulting team who's here this evening. Uh, the Hill Road project is the largest, um, corridor project that was contained in the city's 2014 transportation, uh, bond measure. Um, it involves improving Hill Road from Second Street to Baker Creek Road. Um, we've had a couple of open houses already regarding the project that were quite well attended, one in March that, uh, we had over 130 people sign in and one just last week where we had over 70 folks sign in. Uh, the response was overwhelmingly positive regarding the project at both those open houses. In fact, um, perhaps you might hear from the consulting team that I'll introduce in a bit, uh, that they're not used to having that many people in a room regarding a project and not having the tone of the crowd being upset and worried about the project, so. Um, with that, I would like to introduce CH2M. We're, we're pleased, um, and, and, um, happy to have CH2M Hill on the project. We have a longstanding, uh, positive relationship with CH2M and in fact, those of you that have been around a while, um, I'll, I'll be introducing Dave Simmons in a minute. Um, you might recall that, um, in the late 90s when we improved Lafayette Avenue, um, and when he and I were both, uh, a bit younger, uh, Dave was the lead engineer for CH2M on that project, so, uh, we're pleased to have them, uh, working with us on this project and they've done some great work so far. So without further ado, I'll have, um, uh, CH2M, both Dave Simmons and Darren Hippensteele come forward, they have a brief presentation for you regarding the project. I'll have Rose sort of queue that, um, computer at the, um, testimony table, um, and then I'll also note that the city's project manager, um, Larry Sherwood is here this evening and has been instrumental in this project forward and meeting with, uh, property owners. I think we'll probably have to scape out of that, Dave, and then yours is queued up as a PowerPoint at the bottom. There you go. So, Dave and Darren.
Welcome, gentlemen.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Counselor. Uh, I'm Dave Simmons, in case you can't tell, who might be the older one here. And this is Darren Hippensteele. I'm the project manager with CH2M Hill, leading, uh, this effort. Darren is the, leading the, the engineering team that is, as a design manager. So we're pleased, uh, as Mike indicated, to be a part of this project, working with the city in delivering what is for us a real fun and, uh, a nice opportunity to be involved in a project that, uh, like this, which has such high value in terms of improving quality of life within the community. As Mike said, this is a, a project that, uh, has been, uh, recognized in the city's TSP and is, uh, one of five projects in the, in the Go Bond, uh, program that was approved in 2014. Um, the need for the project is identified here in this, uh, this slide, identifying several of the key, uh, problem areas with, uh, sharp curves along the road, narrow shoulders, uh, lack of sidewalks, um, um, steep grade up near Cemetery Road, up in the middle of the project with, uh, there with, uh, where the pickup truck is shown in the lower right there, where it's difficult to see up over that crest. And then, uh, this, uh, lower left photo was from, uh, the, some of the flooding that we had this, this spring and, and last fall, actually along, uh, the northern portion of the project, so there's certainly a number of issues here that need to be addressed and the project team is, is going to, uh, is working on, uh, solving that as part of this project. So, uh, we're going to talk through a couple of alternatives that the project team developed and, and the primary differences in those alternatives is, is how we address these three intersections within the corridor, uh, the, at the south end, the Hill Road and Second Street intersection, uh, Wallace, uh, Road, uh, Hill Road intersection, and then at the north end, well, at Baker Creek Road. Uh, we gathered traffic data earlier in the year and conducted a traffic study and, uh, and, and looked at these intersections over the next, uh, 20-year horizon, uh, using the city's, uh, travel demand model and from that, we use that to assess, uh, what type of solutions are appropriate for, um, for these key, uh, intersections that have the higher traffic volumes within the corridor. This is the typical roadway cross-section that, uh, the project team is using, uh, for developing the design. Uh, it features, uh, in essence, uh, one travel lane in each direction like you have today, but with the addition of a center, uh, turn lane where left turn lanes are needed and where left turn lanes are not needed, there's an option to provide a landscape, uh, landscaping in that median space. Um, we'll be adding bicycle lanes on each side of the roadway and, uh, and where possible, including a landscape planter strip and then to provide that separation for the sidewalk, uh, on either side of the facility. And we'll talk about, I'll talk about a little bit about where, how, how and where we might deviate from this as we get a little farther on in the presentation. So, uh, as I said, the project team developed a couple of alternatives and we, we brought two alternatives to the March open house, um, that we held, that, uh, as Mike said, was very well attended. Um, and, and so, um, this is a, a photo of the southern kind of half of the, of the corridor, the, the, um, Hill Road location, uh, Second Street, excuse me, is right there, uh, and then, um, uh, Fox Ridge Road is right there in, in the corridor and so north is, is to the, is that direction to the right, and I've got a second slide here that shows that. So this is, uh, alternative one, which, uh, proposed, uh, keeping, uh, what we call stop-controlled intersections, which is what's out there today at the Second Street intersection. This next view of alternative one shows the, uh, kind of northern half of the corridor where, uh, Wallace Road would also maintain, uh, stop, uh, stops, side street controlled like it does today. And then at the north end where Hill Road intersects Baker Creek, we would also have, uh, stop, uh, stop signs there like there is today. Now, we received several questions and I know in the, in the prospectus for the project, there was a discussion about, uh, traffic signals versus roundabouts. In our traffic analysis, the signals at, at this location, at these three key intersections over the 20-year horizon are not warranted. Certainly, uh, what we do in, uh, they are, um, at Baker Creek and at Second Street, near the end of the 20-year horizon, they do, the congestion increases to a level where they would be warranted, but typically you wouldn't install a signal unless it's needed within the first three to five-year periods after construction, so that's why we're continuing to call these kind of stop-controlled, uh, for this alternative. Alternative two looks at, uh, roundabouts at, uh, these three key intersections, so this is a view, same view of, of the southern half of the corridor. Apologize, the graphics are not quite as bright as, uh, the other earlier alternative, but this is the Second Street intersection again, where we, uh, developed a footprint for a roundabout at this location. Moving to the next slide, uh, Wallace is shown there in the lower, lower left corner and then at Baker Creek, there's a roundabout proposed at that location. So the project team, we talked about this at the open sec, the first open house, about the, the benefits of, of roundabouts in terms of, uh, improved, uh, can, traffic capacity, improved safety performance generally over, uh, traditional kind of stop-controlled intersections. So, uh, following the, the receipt of, of the feedback from that first open house, the project team went away and conducted an evaluation of the corridor, of the two alternatives and out of that, uh, the recommendation, uh, from the project team was to, uh, develop a hybrid and, and how we came about that was by looking at the evaluation criteria that we developed, we, as, as part of that, we developed, uh, construction costs and, and the budget for this project, uh, which we've been clear in our communication with the community is, is has, we do have a limited budget for it. And as a result of looking at that budget, we're concerned about, um, while the alternative that had, alternative two that has all, all three roundabouts at those locations did score the best, we also have a limitation from a budget standpoint, we were concerned about our ability to, that the, that you could actually afford to build three roundabouts. They are more expensive to build than these, the stop-controlled intersections.
And, and, and Dave, are we looking at roundabouts being about 400,000 to 500,000 in cost per roundabout?
I'd say that's a pretty close, Darren, do you?
Yeah, I'd say for a single lane roundabout, which was proposed at each of the three study intersections that we looked at, um, the, the Second Street would probably be a little bit less than that because it's a mini roundabout. We don't have the same footprint impacts that we laid out that we have at Wallace and Baker Creek Road, um, and, and that was really a decision to try to avoid as much right-of-way impacts as we, as we could at that intersection. Um, so that's ballpark, I guess, to answer your question.
Okay. So this, uh, alternative three represents a hybrid in that, at the, at the Second Street intersection, we are recommending that we, uh, provide a stop, the stop-controlled intersection there and, and roundabouts at the other two intersections at Wallace and at Baker Creek. And we feel that that strikes a balance in terms of being able to meet the, the project safety goals, um, and also the budget goals that the project has. And, and as I said, uh, we presented this to, uh, this recommendation to the, um, community last, at the, la, second open house, I should say, and, and, and how we came to that conclusion, um, was by looking at the performance of that, uh, you know, I think we've, let me step back for a second. We received questions about, well, why did you, why did you decide to eliminate the roundabout at Second Street versus the other two intersections? And, and as Darren indicated, that, the location at that intersection is more constrained, there's less right-of-way there, we'd create more impact if we tried to construct the, uh, a larger roundabout like we've done at the, like we've shown at the other two locations. And, and so as a result, the, the kind of the safety benefits that we achieve from the roundabout, from those mini roundabouts are not quite, uh, as good as we, as we would like to. The difference between a, a stop-controlled intersection and this, um, and a roundabout is there's less difference with this particular smaller footprint that we have to work with. So we felt like we're, uh, we're providing a good kind of a, uh, balance point there with budget and performance.
What kind of traffic signal or stop are you considering for the Second and Hill? Just a standard stop sign we have now?
Just a standard stop sign, that's right, yes, with, with, uh, left turn lanes, I believe, on the, uh...
Yeah, so the, the, the cross-section of Hill Road would be improved. Uh, right now, it's, it's the, um, call it a rural cross-section with, uh, lanes, narrow shoulders and ditches, so we would upgrade it to the, the standard urban cross-section for the city. Um, Second Street would stay in its configuration now, so we wouldn't have to remove the island that's there in the west or eastbound direction that turns, uh, south on Hill Road. So the footprint, uh, on Second Street wouldn't change much at all, but Second, uh, excuse me, Hill Road would be improved.
Isn't that, um, the one, the Second and Hill, isn't, isn't that intersection busier than the other intersections, so? Or, or is it? I mean, it's not...
Yeah, um, I, I don't remember the, the volumes at each of the study intersections off the top of my head. Um, I think anecdotally I've heard that it, from citizens, that it is busier and, um, looking at the traffic analysis that we did, only Second Street in Baker Creek, um, met the, the thresholds for, for signals at the 20-year horizon, um, Wallace didn't, so you could say that, that Second Street is busier than Wallace. Um, even still, it doesn't meet the, the thresholds for the, the signal until that later date.
Sure, no, and, and my question still is, is kind of based in the, about the roundabout and, and, and the kind of relief that that, that that would bring and the safety considerations and the, uh, the additional cost. Um, and, and so that, that's why I was asking, it would seem, uh, to me like that, that would be the, the one that you would want to keep, um, more so than the one at Wallace, but I understand it's not just a, I, I understand it has a lot to do with the public right-of-way.
That's right, yeah, the, the space.
I'm sorry, Dave, I, I think there's sort of layers of complexity within, within the question. I, I think one of the benefits for, kind of one of the unspoken benefits for a roundabout at Wallace is that it breaks up the length of the corridor. When we improve this corridor to urban standards, it becomes a very long, uh, uninterrupted corridor and, and there are quite a few of the neighbors that are worried about the speed of, uh, traveling, um, vehicles within the corridor. The ability to have the roundabout sort of midpoint in the corridor does create some traffic calming and does break up the corridor a bit, as well as the ability to place a landscape median where we don't need left turn lanes. So we're look, we're trying to balance the safety along the entire corridor as well as at the key intersections, so. One of the challenges with the Second Street intersection is just the footprint and so we aren't able to put a full-size roundabout like we are at the other two locations without significantly impacting private property. The, uh, interesting thing about the proposed improvements is our TSP anticipates that the south portion of Hill Road, south of Second Street, will eventually be improved to urban standards and so as we move forward as a community and the traffic in the area increases, we do have the ability to look at a traffic signal at, at Second Street or perhaps as part of the southern corridor, we decide that it's worth buying up private property to install a full-size roundabout and increase the safety at that location. So nothing we're proposing with this solution precludes us from doing that in the future.
Good, thank you very much.
Oh, that's, that's great, those, you took the words right out of my mouth. So, um, so as a result of that, uh, you know, I, I mentioned the, the overall, uh, concern for keeping the project within budget and, and so I, uh, this is, uh, some of the things that we've talked about in the corridor that, uh, this section represents some of the things that we've been talking about, uh, as a project team to try to reduce the budget, uh, and, and try to ensure that we, we stick within the funds that are available. Uh, this shows, uh, uh, the cross-section of the roadway, uh, in an area between the, the Fox Ridge Road and the very north, north end of the project at Baker Creek, um, where along the westerly side there where the, where it's the rural side of the street, we're proposing that we would not provide a sidewalk on that side of the street largely because there isn't, there, we can provide the pedestrian connectivity as such by putting it on the side where the homes are and, uh, and, and then there's, there's a cost, uh, savings as a result of that. So, uh, south of, of, of Fox Ridge, we would then, there would be a sidewalk on both sides because there, it matches with the land use in that location where there are houses on both sides.
I have a question, if you can go back to the other map showing the two turns, next one. This area up here on the top of that peak, is it necessary, or am I looking at that? Maybe it's this one right here, that's the one.
That's...
Is it necessary to have that open there? Cause that's right at the peak of that, that hill.
It, it, uh...
I see most close calls is right at the top of that.
Right, it, it's, it's closed today.
There's a barrier on the, on the west side or the, the upper side, but both the church and the retirement, uh, community, um, they, they tend to use that more than I think they should and it seems really dangerous. They pull out there and you're kind of hoping that no one, no one hits you as you're, as you're entering, because you can't see the bottom of the hill, you don't see what's coming. Sure, so, uh, part of the project will be to, um, improve the vertical curve on the roadway in that location, because right now it doesn't meet any standard at all. Um, I think the, the, the profile grade on the, on the north side of the slope is greater than 10% as you come off the, the top of the hill. So we would, we would essentially flatten that out and improve the site distance for all directions, not just for the, um, users trying to come in and out of the hilltop community, um, and the church, but also for vehicles... but also for vehicles traveling on the roadway. So, there'd be a lot better site distance for making decisions when to pull out. And also have the left turn lane there for vehicles to be able to pull off, to pick those gaps when they can pull into, into the properties. We would not be proposing to open Cemetery Road as part of the project, it would stay closed.
And then facetiously, is there going to be a wildlife crossing there? There's a lot of deer in that corner.
Heard anything about wildlife crossings yet?
No, one in front of my house.
They, the deer nest in...
Everything.
This area here and right here, it's just deer constantly.
Well, see, we're going to put that in the middle of the road so they can...
Oh, okay. I hear about it all the time, so...
On the Second, on the Second and Hill Road, to maintain a controlled intersection, non-signalized intersection like it's proposed now, with the left-hand turn lanes, my, I guess my only concern is I've been out there and I live in that area, and are the transportation studies, are they done on what the current traffic is or what the anticipated traffic's going to be?
They do focus on that 20-year horizon and the growth in traffic.
Because I know there's times now going north, especially going north on Hill Road, where I'm backed up, nine cars, 10 cars, 11 cars coming up to that Second and Hill Road intersection. Doesn't happen all the time, but it seems like there's...
Peak hours, probably.
Well, it's not necessarily, sometimes it's 2:00 in the afternoon. And I think part of it is because that little market complex there gets so much business of people pulling in and out of there. I mean, they're busy all the time. And I'm wondering, you know, if we're five years into that 20-year planning cycle or whatever, before we figure we're going to need that, or as Mike said, when we improve the south end of Hill Road and that becomes to urban standards. And I'm not, I don't know the cost of the signalized intersection. But if that isn't something that, you know, are we going to find out is after Hill Road's improved and the way it changes traffic? In two years, are we going to find out that that intersection is bad enough that we need to signal?
But you've got a lot of doctors, dentists, that's a concentrated area.
That's a very busy, busy intersection.
And then with those new apartments that are sitting back over on the west side off of, south of...
And that's my only, that's my only concern about Second and Hill Road. Now, whether it justifies a signal, I'm not, definitely not for a roundabout at that intersection. But whether that justifies a signal at that intersection, I just don't think a stop intersection, but I don't know. I haven't done the run, done the traffic studies, of course, it's not my job. But alls I know is what's on that, the four, three corners of that intersection and the additional commercial property that's right there, that I think that's an awful busy, busy intersection to just have a controlled stop with. But I mean, that's just me. And Mike, I'm sure you've had a lot of input into that.
Yeah, in fact, the traffic model that Dave referenced is based on complete development of all the properties within the urban growth boundary. And the initial warrant analysis is based on actual traffic data that was gathered currently. And so, we're not only looking on, at today's situation, we're also then projecting into the future to determine, you know, was a signal going to be needed within the short-term planning period? And it wasn't. And so, it would be pretty difficult to install a signal now when it wasn't warranted and, you know, get concurrence with our partners at the state that maintain our signals for us and things like that. Again, nothing we're doing precludes us from, if there is a significant change, adding that signal in the future. In fact, there are some conditions of approval for some of the residential lands to the west that as they develop, if a signal is needed, they need to install it at that intersection. So, there are some protections already in place within land use approvals and in, within our TSP that will address that traffic at that intersection as it continues to grow.
Okay, is there, let me ask one more question. Is there any plans on, even though it could be five years, 10 years before we put a signal in there, to overturn that, to put some of the infrastructure in to support that signal? So, in five years, or if we determine we need one, we're not going back in and tearing everything up to put the signals back in?
Well, again, you wouldn't want to put too much infrastructure such as foundations in place because structural rules could change between now and then. And, you know, things like conduits can be bored these days. The sort of intrusive tear things up is a little bit less of an issue with a traffic signal where you're boring signal foundations and also boring conduits across to provide connections. And even these days, detection of vehicles at traffic signals is done by video, not necessarily by loops in the ground. And so, again, I don't think anything we're doing with this project will necessarily be throwaway or preclude an improvement at a later date.
Okay, and then my only other question was on Hill Road and, Hill Road and Baker Creek. My big concern is that, is, you know, that's a pretty, coming up off the bridge from the west to the east to come up to that traffic signal, that's a pretty dangerous curve. And once you come up around that curve, you don't have a lot of room to slow down before you ride on top of that traffic, that roundabout. And so, what is being done along west of Hill Road to mitigate that issue about where the Draper's Farm is? Because cars come around that corner all the time doing 50 miles an hour. And I'll tell you, they're not going to stop by the time they get to that roundabout, to be going around that roundabout safely. So, what kind of mitigation things were looked at or can be done to mitigate the safety standard of that roundabout?
Well, first thing that we would want to look at is, is the curvature of that curve, you know, what kind of design speed it would accommodate to the design standards that we, that we're working towards. And whether a vehicle could, you know, if it was coming around the, around the corner at the posted speed, could they stop safely at the intersection or slow down to get into the roundabout? We, what we've laid out so far shows that a vehicle could slow down coming out of the curve into the roundabout because a roundabout's not a stop-controlled condition. And you could, you could stop in a yield condition, but roundabouts are designed for about 20 miles an hour through the circulatory roadway. So, as a vehicle comes around that corner, they don't necessarily have to stop to, slow down to stop condition. And we have enough space between the curve and the roundabout to allow vehicles to slow, safely slow down. But what we are doing is collecting some additional topo survey as part of our, as part of our work efforts to see, you know, if we do need to extend our improvements further west out of the intersection and soften that curve so that it is to a better design standard. If our improvements push that far, that we have the data to do that.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Good. So, I mentioned the, some of the cross-section modifications that we're, we'll be looking at as we move forward into the design phase to, and will, as we assess budget. And so, looking at things like eliminating sidewalk and things like that in areas where it doesn't, the functional need isn't, isn't there. So, at this point, I wanted to just flash, this is the evaluation matrix. And I recognize that the print is a little small there, so this is not meant to be an eye test. But if you can focus on the colors, perhaps this is, this is the tool that, that the project team used to consider a variety of criteria, including safety, natural resource impacts, and the ability to safely implement this from a construction standpoint, from a cost standpoint. And then the last criteria that we had was, does it, how does it meet the traffic needs? And we use a qualitative kind of a scoring with kind of a good, better, best. And green represents the best, kind of the upper end. And that kind of brownish color is the, is the lower end of the spectrum in terms of a score. So, as I mentioned, that when we went through the evaluation, roundabouts generally are from a safety criteria score the best. They do take up a larger footprint. So, there were, as you'll see in a couple of the criteria, right-of-way needs are slightly, are slightly higher. They are, they more and more difficult to construct. So, they, in the construction, constructability is what that capable, what that represents is how easy are they construct in terms of keeping traffic moving? They're a little more difficult that way. But in terms of traffic performance, these, the roundabout will have a much longer lifespan beyond even the 20-year horizon that we looked at. Whereas, as, as has been discussed, the Second Street intersection will in fact need some sort of additional work within the 20-year, near the end of the 20-year horizon. But the roundabout should be good well beyond that in terms of their capacity, that inability to handle traffic in their current form.
Sorry, just occurred to me, the, the roundabout proposed for Hill and Baker, what would its capacity be, your usability for large farm equipment?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, one of the things that we do with each of these projects is look at what type of vehicles are going to be using them. And Larry Sherwood, the Cities Project Manager, has been reaching out to the community, talking with farmers, local users, that sort of thing. And we've, we have a history of doing these kinds of projects in these rural areas where log trucks, there's lowboys, farmer implements. And so, we size the roundabout and Darren and his team, they actually determine what type of vehicles and they have, they run models through the, through the roundabout. And so, that's how it's...
Actually, I know from Baker Creek, from west, east on Baker Creek, the Hill Road, then south on Hill Road to Peavine, there's a lot of farm implements that use that because there's no other way to get around. And I mean, there's, especially during harvest season now, there's a lot of big farm implements that use.
Sure.
What's the corresponding budgets to the Alternatives one, two and three? Do they go, do they, they gain in price or do they, do they correlate to their overall score?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember what the exact price. We did conceptual level cost estimates as part of our alternatives analysis. And I don't recall the exact dollar amounts for each one of them. The colors, squares represent the most expensive option and the lowest expensive option. So, the roundabouts, with the three roundabouts was, was the highest option.
So...
Thinking to put all them together then is Alternative One that scored a six, the least expensive of option.
It is.
Alternative Three that scored seven, the Second and Nine.
That's correct, yeah. The general range of these numbers was between eight to, 8 million to about 8.6, 8.7 million was kind of the range in overall cost between Alternative One and Alternative Two. So, it wasn't a dramatic difference in terms of cost, but it takes us over that, slightly over where the desired budget is for the project if we went with all three roundabouts. So, this last, this, I think this is the last slide here where we outlined where we're headed in terms of project schedule. We are in the process of entering into the preliminary design phase and actually will be completing what we call the 30% design milestone in about another month on the project. And then from there, we have, enter the final design phase, which takes us from 30% to 100% completion. And we'll have intermediate milestones where we'll be submitting the plans to the city for review at 60%, 90% and then final plans. Right-of-way acquisition is anticipated to start this summer. And the project's on target for bidding next year. And depending on phasing and the staging, whether we can get done in one construction season, it's likely that it will slip over into a second season just to allow for appropriate time for construction and, while maintaining traffic flow. Because that is a challenge with the roundabouts in particular at Baker Creek. We may need to do that in halves, which takes a little longer in order to keep traffic flowing because there isn't a good alternate route at that particular location.
Any questions from anybody? Gentlemen, thank you very much. Mike, good, good job.
Absolutely.
And I think with Sherwood on, we have a good project manager on it and you guys, great, great job, so...
Mr. Mayor, I was going to add in there, Larry Sherwood, the Project Manager, brought some of these flyers we had left over from the public meeting. And they're just general information flyers for a roundabout. So, I was going to leave them at the back table or give some to you guys as well.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that'll take us to our last presentation. And we'll have Scott Fessler come up, who actually is going to do a presentation on the Police Department Investigation Team.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I know it's been a very, very long evening, but this is one of the, an important presentation. I think it kind of goes and will kind of paint a picture of what's going on in the city, what's going on in the Investigation Section, which obviously trickles into the Patrol Division. Scott's worked hard at this presentation. And as you recall from my January presentations and previous presentations, the Detective Section's seen an unprecedented jump in the criminal investigations that they handled. And that because of this massive workload, in April this year, we resigned an officer from the Patrol Section to the Investigation Section. Scott's presentation's going to cover the types of crimes that they're investigating, why the cases continue to rise, the rates at which they've risen. And also going to probably tackle and probably open your eyes to some difficult situations at the Police Department and more importantly, the victims of crimes are being put in as their cases cannot be investigated in a timely or as an efficient manner. So, with that being said, I'd like to introduce Scott Fessler. He's been a detective sergeant for a number of years and with the PD for 15-plus years, probably. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Scott.
Welcome, Scott.
Thank you. My name is Scott Fessler. I've been with the police department for over 15 years. Been detective sergeant for two and a half. I guess I'll throw this out to you. I've never been to a city council meeting that's gone this long, so I don't know how long you guys are used to...
Whatever it takes, we're getting used to these long ones.
Well, then I agree with the mayor.
Whatever it takes, we've got five minutes now. Whatever it takes.
My team and I are used to, we've pushed through longer days. And so, basically what I'm offering up is the opportunity to, there is extremely important information in this presentation. And I'm willing to, I guess, offer it up to you. If you want to push through, I'll push through. I'll do it as fast as I can. But there is some statistical stuff in here that goes towards what I feel is an extreme crisis right now in the Detective Section, staffing and caseloads. And in March, one of the city council meetings, Councilman Jeffries said, mentioned that it is the council's desire to hear non-sugar-coated information. And this presentation, in my opinion, is about as sugar-free as you can get. There is no silver lining to what this information is, in my opinion. In April, there was a sort of an analogy made between public safety staffing in the city and that maybe it's, you know, a vehicle that's maybe got a squeaky wheel that's maybe pulling to the left or the right. And we got to start talking about how are we going to get it straightened out? The analogy I would give you right off the bat, and you haven't even seen the presentation yet, is that the Detective Section is a vehicle that the wheels have come off right now. And so, I'm willing to push through this. It's late at night. There's, I brought copies of this PowerPoint presentation with each one of you so you could review it. And so, if you're game, I'm game. You've been hearing a lot of information tonight and it's late. And I didn't time this, but you're probably looking at 40, 45 minutes.
I'll leave it up to the council. You know, I think this is important. If I don't want to know if we want to push or have Martha schedule a presentation, this is the only presentation we have. So, if it takes an hour, hour and 15 minutes, we can, I hate to not have Scott with everybody that attends tonight, not do it, but yet since it's a critical issue, I'd rather make sure we're all sharp and...
Would you want to do it at your dinner meeting in two weeks? I'd give up my training slot for that.
But if it's an hour and a half...
An hour and a half.
Hour and a half, yeah.
The thought I had is, is maybe be able to pick up on the CD and preview it so that we could be a little more prepared and then have it at our next meeting.
Is the CD such that it's fairly self-explanatory that we would...
Um, yeah, it's like any PowerPoint, you know, it's hard to put all words on a slide. And so, it's a skeleton and then...
But I mean, have the, have the presentation, but give us an opportunity to look at the charts and some of the information.
Yeah, but I'm not even so sure, Scott. And I, I mean, the length of that and all the information we've heard, if, if, you know, it's going to take a minimum of 45 minutes to push through. I'm not even so sure we can dedicate, I mean, we could, in all honesty and all fairness, I mean, I'm leaving it up to the council, but if we feel comfortable going through this and being able to absorb everything we, everything we have, I'm going to leave it up to the, I'm going to leave it up to the council. But some of us are retired, some of us, Kevin, I'm sorry.
I have to drive to Pendleton in the morning, so I'm kind of erring on the side of not doing it tonight.
I'm respectful of that as well, and that's why I'm offering it up. I'm respectful of that as well and that's why I'm offering it up. I'm not opposed to providing you with the, I didn't mean to interrupt you there, but I'm not opposed to providing you.
I guess my brothers would, is if we can get a download posted to our website or sent to us via email, the PowerPoint, so we can just look at. Yeah, but what I'm saying is if he doesn't have one.
Well, not here, but at home.
Yeah, but what, but that's what I'm saying. And then, what we can do is he can come back, Scott can come back and do the presentation.
That's what I'm saying, is take it home.
Because we can make available, yeah, we can make it available.
Could we make it a work session at the beginning of next time?
Yeah, well, actually, we could. So, if you don't push through it, Scott, you're talking hour and a half.
How happy is the agenda at the next meeting?
Oh, county, it's the county. So, it'll be the first, no, not week?
No, I.
That's in July, isn't it? That's in July, I believe. So, what I'd rather, so if an hour and a half, you think would get you through everything?
I'm not sure where the error came from. If I said that, I'm talking 40, 45 minutes to push through it.
So, we could do it at our dinner.
You could do it at the dinner meeting next week if you start right at six.
Yeah, why don't we do this? I think I'd be comfortable dedicating our, if we can get started at six o'clock or no, 10 after six and turn it over to Scott, that we do it as a presentation at our dinner meeting and then make sure this is made available online for others. Because I want, since we're not sugar-coating and I want to see the facts, I want to have some time to really understand what those facts say.
Well, it's really, the facts are, you're not going to have to think a whole lot. It's just some numbers, some comparator numbers. And I think what Detective Fessler's saying is that the presentation itself, 40 minutes, you know, as we go through this. And the CD will provide you a little bit of, a little longer time to take a look at the information. I don't think, I would envision this going an hour and a half. I don't, the number hour and a half came out, but I, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there.
You're throwing out an hour and a half for everything?
No, 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 no.
45 minutes for everything.
Correct. The presentation's 40 to 45 and Scott will.
My thing, if it's like anything else, just like tonight, we're probably going to, once we start looking at it, have a lot of questions and that's going to add quite a significant amount of time. So, but I'm all for at least starting it at a dinner, doing it during our dinner meeting. Matt, does that work with you? And Scott, does that work with you if we do it at our meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I apologize to my chief because this was, I mean, he had every intent to continue on and so do I if we weren't at this point in the night and I recognize that. And so.
We appreciate.
Me offering this up caught him off and I apologize.
Oh, that's fine.
So, yeah, we're probably 40, 45 minutes. The only thing, if I could just make a brief comment and then we can move on is that the reason it's so important to me, and again, I'm very respectful of your time and be willing to postpone it, is this process, this evaluation process, like I said, I've been detective sergeant for about two and a half years, started in January 2014. At that point, that is when we saw the start of some just unbelievable increases in caseloads. And combined with reduced staffing or inadequate staffing, unfortunately, is, has put us in a position right now, two to two and a half years later, that I'm not sure where we're going to go in the next six months. I don't know what the detective section volume and work and how we are going to accomplish what needs to get done. That's what I want to share with you. This started back in October, November, talking with the chief. And basically, I, for me personally, being the supervisor, I looked at it like I have to do everything within my power to push this message forward. I've been pushing this message internally for almost two years and we've been brainstorming, trying to come up with a solution. And so, I have to be able to say at some point that I've done everything within my power. And so, I, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm willing to do the presentation. And so, unfortunately, we were initially scheduled for March-ish, which would have landed in the budget process, but things get moved. It's not the only city business. I totally recognize that. And so, we've been bumped a couple of times. But I want to be respectful of your time and want to be able to provide you with an intelligent presentation that you can then.
Yeah, I want to make sure the council can cons, that's why I'm looking at the dinner because I want to make sure we can concentrate on what you're, what you're providing us too. So, they're checking on a date on, we'll see what.
When I make those analogies, it's basically to say there are some serious concerns.
Well, and we appreciate that. That's what we want to hear. We want to be able to.
And we really do want to hear you. I'm so sorry it's so late.
No, I totally, I understand. Sometimes things just.
Let's move, we can move that. Jay, I don't think Janet will mind moving that one out.
You're good.
Let's move that one. Just tell Jay and Jack that we're going to move that because this is really more, I mean, the kids on the block is still functioning, whereas this is much more important to us, I think.
Yeah, and if we could do the session in here and just have box lunches or whatever.
So, we can see the PowerPoint and everything.
So, we can see the PowerPoint and the people from the public can attend it. They'll be more comfortable than if we're trying to do it in the other room.
Yeah, because that way, we can actually schedule it as a work session and instead of dinner meeting, that way, six o'clock and that way, the public will be noticed. And since our dinner meetings are public anyway, we might have a lot of, some of the public that want to come and listen to that. And I think that's a much better venue to do it. So, six o'clock on the, what day would that be, Rose?
June 28.
June 28, six o'clock, Scott, does that sound good with you?
I'll make that work, yeah.
Good. And then, we'll have some more of the public here. I like that, so.
Our apologies to the men and women in the back.
Guys, we don't realize you didn't have anything more to do tonight.
Well, I do, I do just want to take a minute. This is my team.
Wow, what a good looking team. Matt.
Yeah, I think it's important to recognize Sam Elliott's back there, Hugo Surt is back there, Brian McMullin, Justin James, Bill Christensen, both captains are back there and they came here to listen to the presentation and provide support. So, I just wanted to recognize them. They've been here a long time too.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And you won't, you won't find a better group of guys. What you'll see, I'm sorry, it's very emotional for me. The work that you're going to see that's been accomplished and that is unfortunately not getting accomplished is carried on their shoulders. And the last two years, that's what I'm here to convey. It's difficult and it's not a position that I, that I really thought that we would be in. And so, I've been at a couple of meetings where you talk about needing to have the tough discussions going forward and this is going to have to be one of them. There, we deal with the worst of the worst cases, the detective section. I'm just going to leave it at that because there's a lot of information here. But you will not find a better team.
Like Scott, it's very important because it's not only important to me as the mayor, to us as the city council and to our citizens, it's very important to us too that we make sure that we give the staff, like the detective staff or the patrol staff, whatever staff is, that we give the staff the tools to make sure that they're in a position to put our citizens in better hands. So, we're just as concerned with the staff and with your team and our team as we are with citizens because we realize that they can't, we can't do justice to our citizens if we're not giving the staff the tools and everything.
I appreciate that. I really do. That means a lot to me and I know it means a lot to them. So, thank you. I'm sorry to get sidetracked there and I'm sorry for the kind of the emotions, but it's very.
Understandable.
And if you let us know who's going to come back, then we'll make sure that they have, they have box dinners.
And we should have.
Also.
Give us the list of the people that are attending.
I appreciate that.
Please.
Thank you.
So, Rose, you can coordinate that, make sure that staff, whatever, the police PD is, staff is going to come for the, for the work session that they have, we have enough box dinners.
Yeah, and I'll leave these, yep, if you.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take them home.
Give them to Rose and she'll make sure we get them.
Thank you very much.
And Scott, I appreciate you being so passionate about your job and the 15 years you've put in and everything.
Thank you.
It definitely shows your passion for the job and your staff definitely shows.
Well, I try to keep up with my guys and that's, that's tough some days. So, I appreciate your time.
You got it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one other piece of business tonight and that is Doug's and it's initiating a legislative zoning amendment affecting restrictions on marijuana within 1,000 feet of preschools. So, Doug?
I have about a three-hour presentation.
Doug, yours can be done about July.
No, I will.
I'm sorry, I think we've already covered marijuana.
Yeah, we've already covered that, Doug. Now, if we would have covered it a little bit better, we probably could have listened to Fessler's presentation.
Haven't seen you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll be very brief in my comments. I'll refer you to, if I could, to the memorandum that's in your packet. And in very brief summary, in our short course of history and working with the marijuana ordinances, we've encountered a bit of an issue dealing with one element in particular, and that's the 1,000-foot buffer that we have from preschools. And that affects medical marijuana dispensaries and commercial recreational marijuana sales as well. I've provided for you a couple of reasons why it's adding to our complexity and our ability to enforce or lack of ability to enforce some provisions of that. It speaks to the lack of licensing program at the state as well as the various types of, types of preschools that are available through the state process. And also, there's a little bit of an element of secrecy to the licensing, or I shouldn't say certification of these types of facilities and how their information's released to us and our ability to then track them and determine where they're located in the city. All that is just to ask for your direction to allow staff to initiate a legislative amendment to the current ordinance specific to that buffer element. And if time permits this evening or you're so inclined, staff would appreciate your consensus or some direction as to the two options that we lay out in that ordinance. And one is to remove in its entirety the buffer from preschools. And the other, the second option would be to go out and better define the type of preschool or childcare facility that you believe should be buffered from those types of activities, marijuana-related activities.
What, I guess, Doug, I'll ask you, if we look at the two options, I'll ask you and I'll ask David, to cut down the complexities in the future and to bring us more in compliance with what the state law says regarding preschool, what's the best, is it best to not, to go out and not try to figure out what, you know, what we want to define it as and just drop it out totally? What's the, what's the best?
Yeah, I think that the preschool buffer is one that is unique to McMinnville's code. It is not something that is a state requirement. So, neither OHA nor OLCC and their licensing imposes a 1,000-foot restriction around preschools. So, we're really out on our own there coming up with a definition. And as we looked into this issue, as Doug mentions in the memo, the state has a number of different classifications depending on what's going on with childcare centers, nursery schools, child play schools, child development centers. And there's a, you know, in the, there's no licensing of those. There's a registration process for some of them. Some of those records are not made available to us to be able to provide a map to applicants that are coming in and getting a lux, creating the potential for a gotcha situation if it arises later, that there was one there or it's raised during the process, which is essentially what happened in this case. We had a, it came to our attention as we had, I believe, approved a land use compatibility statement for an applicant and then a concerned citizen came in and complained that there was preschool located within the 1,000-foot buffer. We had no record of it. Turned out, they hadn't gotten a conditional use permit, which was required from us. So, we had no city record of it. And when we started looking in with the state, that's when we found this kind of conundrum of our, our ordinance not being well-defined to what qualified. Because it's an additional restriction beyond what state law currently requires, one option is to simply eliminate the restriction altogether, which brings us closer into conformity with what the state is regulating in that area. But if maintaining a buffer around that preschool-type activity is something that the council wanted to maintain, then we would want to initiate a process at the planning commission level where we figured out how to get our hands around it and define it in a way that applicants will be aware of where those things are and we're aware of where they are to enforce the boundaries.
To me, preschool locations, and I can think of three here at McMinnville that I know in the last year that have changed locations. And that's pretty common in preschool locations and trying to just keep up without any kind of business license, any kind of compatibility, trying to keep up with all the properties that the preschools move in, into and they move out of, whether they're in a house, whether they're in a commercial building. I could see that being very, very onerous in its own. I mean, that's just my thing. I'd like to have it, but I'm not so sure what it would take to get us there. And then, once we're there, to maintain it.
I would tend to err on the side of going with what the state says at this point in time and just simply removing it.
Because the state may change, who knows?
Well, they could change easily. And if necessary, we can, at that point in time, do the work, but.
That's something to consider because as of right now, other than this one conflict that we didn't know anything about, they didn't get a permit with us or a land use, whatever you would call it.
Yeah, conditional use.
Right, so they didn't do that. So, there probably aren't going to be a lot of, of these preschools affected by any of the sighting of the marijuana facilities. So, once these are all in here and they're locked, let's say they're locked in, if one were to move in next to, next door to it.
Then they're ground for, because it's already there.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm all for greater restrictions on these, as you all know, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, but when you think of it, we're talking preschoolers. I mean, the issue would be with their parents more than it would be with the preschoolers. So, I don't know that it's really an issue.
And I, and I.
This is one I'd just rather, I mean, myself personally, even though I'd like to know where they are.
I don't think it's going to do any difference to get rid of it.
I don't think a restriction, as I say, because they're preschoolers, I don't think a restriction is going to make a big difference. And I think the process, owner's process of keeping up. And I can see these coming up a lot more. I can actually see these coming up a lot more, so.
Yeah, none of the preschools have an open campus.
Where they go out for lunch. Anyway, Remy, what's your thoughts? We're going to give Remy, she looks tired, we're going to give Remy a joyous chance.
She isn't going to say anything.
Well, but you're always going to say something. We just have to give you the opportunity.
My thinking is to follow the, you know, do as best we can to be in line with what the state's already laid out. I understand the intent is to kind of expand these protections, but I also see that, you know, a nursery school, I mean, those can pop up like this, that, and the other. And I think it becomes burdensome for, for staff, as it says here, even that the ability to administer and enforce this particular provision of the chapter of the McMinnville zoning ordinance is severely compromised and left open to challenge. So, I mean, I think that staff is saying, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but my interpretation is that the, the most direct way forward is to remove that language, which doesn't coincide with state language and allows us to actually enforce our zoning ordinances.
I, you know, I guess by consensus, unless Doug or David has anything more, by consensus, we can have, we can ask to have that removed by consensus. Have you come back, back to us with the amendment?
What you, what you can do is you can vote to initiate the text amendment process. And then, because it's land use code, we have to go through the notice to DLCD and public hearing process at the planning commission level. And then, ultimately, it will come back to you, just like the sign ordinance amendments will at some point with recommendation up from the planning commission.
Okay, if we all feel comfortable, have somebody make a motion to do just what David said.
I move that we do this text change.
Whatever David said.
Whatever David said.
I have a motion to do whatever David said. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show up past the council unanimously without Councilor Rudeman. So, David, you're going to have to repeat that.
For the record, what I said was, that was a motion to initiate a legislative amendment pursuant to McMinnville zoning ordinance, section 17.72.080.
You know that, Rose?
Yeah, I've done it.
It's in Doug's staff report.
So, that's the, that's the motion Remy made and Kelly seconded and we voted on. Okay.
You basically, the recommendation that was in the staff report.
The recommendation was in the staff report. So, Doug, do you have anything else you want to cover tonight?
No, I appreciate your conversation and direction.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we're not going to cover staff reports or advisories from the council tonight. So, does anybody have anything else to come in front of the council?
Do we have a, oh, sorry, not the council, Urban Renewal Agency Board, right? Oh.
Oh, God, we do.
Can't go home yet.
We forego the urban renewal.
Well, it wouldn't take long. Urban renewal for the budget.
Okay, I don't have, I got to pull that out.
So, you can adjourn the council meeting and then open the.
I don't remember getting any of that. Okay, council meeting adjourned. Now, what I'll do is I'll open the call to order of the June, should be, June 14, 2016, meeting, the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. We have the minutes of the. We have the minutes of the March 20, March 8, 2016, Urban Renewal Agency Board meeting. Do I have a?
Uh...
Oh, okay.
It was there.
I was looking at the calendar link.
There it is and I've called this to order, consider minutes to March 18th. Do we have minutes included in the packet? Can you scroll down, Row, we have minutes?
It sings.
Okay, we do have, we do have minutes.
Pretty good.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Aye, second.
You have to move first.
I move that we adopt the minutes.
We have moved by Council President Jeffries. Do I have a second by Council Makie? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none?
Sorry, backup station?
Yeah, backup.
Nah.
My battery went dead, all right. So now we'll have a, I'll open a public hearing and the public, public hearings regarding proposed 2016 17 budget as approved by the budget committee. Do we have any, anybody like to testify on the budget?
You've lost your audience.
Nobody like to testify on the budget? Remy, you have any questions on the budget?
No, sir.
Scott?
Nope.
Kelly? Kevin? Okay, anybody in the audience? Nobody in the audience? I'll close the public, public hearing. So what we'll do is we'll, we don't do it and we'll just get it back in front of us in the, on the 28th. So that being said, we have no old business, we have no new business, we have no ordinances, no resolutions, nothing else, leaving you to judge.
You might have broken a record on that one, Mr. Mayor.